Call to order this regular meeting of the Berkeley City Planning Commission on Tuesday, February 27, 2018. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Like I was stating before the pledge, I have a bit of a head cold, so I apologize if I'm a little stuffy and a little slow. So, Mr. McClain, will you please call the roll?
Kepalonsky.
Here.
Moret.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
Jadel.
Here.
Kempner.
Here.
Tengari.
Here.
Barnett.
Present.
Buckler.
Here.
And Commissioner Smith is absent this evening.
Yes. All right. Can we have an approval of the agenda, please? A motion?
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
All right.
Moret.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Jadel.
Yes.
Kempner.
Yes.
Tengari.
Yes.
Barnett.
Yes.
Kepalonsky.
Yes.
And Buckler.
Yes. All right. Can we have an approval of the minutes from January 23, 2018?
We shouldn't approve the minutes from January the 23rd.
Do we have a second? Second. Any comments or any changes or modifications? Mr. McClain?
Richardson.
Yes.
Jadel.
Yes.
Kempner.
Yes.
Tengari.
Yes.
Barnett.
Yes.
Kepalonsky.
Yes.
Moret.
Yes.
And Buckler.
Yes. All right. Do we have any external communications that were not in our packet, Mr. McClain?
None at this time.
All right. Thank you. All right. Now is the time for citizen comments. Citizens are invited to the podium to make any comments on any item not on the agenda. I ask that you keep your comments to four minutes or less. Come forth.
Kurt Hight, Berkeley, Michigan. You know, I don't know if you guys had seen the article about the Pinnacle Homes, which is one half of or part of the group that was working on the La Salle PUD. I guess they had sold and merged with a group out of Ohio, so I'm not sure how that affects the PUD, or I'm not sure if that was a sign that they were not financially stable, but usually when one company's galvanized by another, it has something to do with money. So, we'll see how that turns out.
I also wanted to talk about the La Salle development.
Your name and your city of residence, please.
My name is Dale Carlson. I'm a ten-year resident of Berkeley. I live on Catelpa near Woodward, and I have recently become aware of a possible redevelopment of the lot upon which Our Lady of La Salle Cool School currently stands. I'm an architectural historian, and a research project that I'm currently engaged in has recently revealed to me the great historical significance of the architectural sculpture applied to the school's facade in the year it was completed. Basically, I am speaking to you tonight because I wanted to make an effort to inform this body and anyone else here with an interest in local historical preservation of the importance of these works, and express my desire to save them, and explain exactly why I believe we should all try to put together a plan to save them. These sculptures were created by Carrato Parducci in his Detroit studio in 1945. He's the same guy who sculpted the statues of safety and security that flanked the ornate Griswold entrance of the Guardian Building in Detroit's financial district. He sculpted the many elaborate plasterworks at the Detroit Masonic Temple, and he also sculpted the gorgeous Stations of the Cross at Royal Oak Shrine of the Little Flower. Parducci was pretty much the last guy in the United States to make an entire career of architectural sculpture. He came out of an immensely fertile and important scene centered around Manhattan's McDougal Alley in Greenwich Village in the 1910s and 1920s. He was taught his craft there by a variety of old masters, some of whom are very famous in their own right, so he's not just a local treasure, but also a figure of national stature. And the tradition that he comes for actually extends back to the Old World and the stonemasonry guilds of the Middle Ages. In 1998, my research partner, Anar Kavarn, who currently lives in Arizona, met personally with Parducci's son, Alan, who was living in suburban Los Angeles. He allowed him to photocopy his father's mammoth archive and also original ledgers from his working years in Detroit, which enumerate over 95 percent of his commissions. Parducci's commission for Our Lady of La Salle School is listed on the 1945 ledger page with a contract value of $187. These sculptures, in all likelihood, are the most significant pieces of public sculpture that have ever existed in Berkeley's history. Saving the building would be great, in my opinion, but if it cannot be saved, I would encourage the planning commission to make the preservation of these sculptures a requirement of any possible redevelopment plan, and I would personally volunteer my time to the effort, should it be undertaken. There are a couple of other local precedents from the last few decades in which endangered Parducci works were transplanted to new structures, and should a plan that involves preserving these structures emerge, there are most certainly resources we could draw upon to learn exactly how to get it done right. I wish I knew more about it, but I'm totally willing to learn and do some work on behalf of the city if that's what it takes to get these pieces saved. I'm almost finished. Lastly, speaking merely as a citizen, with no regard for the sculpture, I believe that Berkeley has a relatively vibrant downtown retail district, and that downtown districts such as ours rely heavily upon the labors of people who are likely to earn the kind of money that necessitates apartment living. For that reason, I would also encourage the city council to approve an apartment development in this part of town should a well-conceived plan be presented. I would also like to leave my business cards in case there's anybody here that's interested in the historical preservation effort I'm starting, trying to get started. And just a couple more things. I've been in contact with Jeffrey Tong of the Historical Committee, and he has said that the city museum would be willing to put up space if they can't find a way to repurpose the sculpture and put it on a new building, if a new building ends up getting put there. And I'm also in the process of trying to make contact with somebody in the Archdiocese of Detroit who might know something about the disposition of properties like this when a building gets raised or sold. And I am also trying to make somebody in contact with somebody with a construction company who managed the building, the Michigan State Law School, in 1998, which has a transplanted Parducci from the Detroit College of Law in Detroit on it, which is almost exactly the same size as the big sculpture on Our Lady of La Salle School, so they would be a great resource to be in contact with if we can get this effort rolling. So, that's all I wanted to say? Yes?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is there a single sculpture that you're referencing? Is there multiple sculptures? And what is the size of the sculpture or sculptures?
Okay. There's four of them.
And the location?
There are four of them, and they're right over the front door. There's one that's way high up, and it represents symbols of Christ. It has some carpenter's tools on it.
Okay.
And those are less artistically significant. They're still by Parducci, but those are very simple sculptures compared to the middle one that has symbols of education on it, like there's a lamp and there's some foliage.
Also over the door?
It's right over the door. That one is probably the most artistically significant because of its size and the artistry involved.
Four feet high? Three feet high?
I'm going to say that one's about five feet by two and a half feet.
Okay.
But this is just guessing from looking, you know? I've never got up there and measured.
Are they embedded?
They probably weigh a lot.
Are they separate from the building?
Usually. And I mean, I can only speak to so much process. I'm an historian and not necessarily an artist, so I don't know Parducci's process like the back of my hand, as much as I know his lifetime outfit and where his works are located. But generally speaking, it's an applied art, and the sculpture is applied to the building after the building is built, and they use like super industrial adhesives to get them on there, so removal isn't like super, super simple. It definitely involves getting some people who know what they're doing. Before you want to try it, you could easily crack the sculpture and ruin it unintentionally. That's why I think these people at the Michigan State Law School would be a great resource to be in touch with.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. I'm going to leave.
If anybody else is interested in getting involved, in person, contact me.
Thank you. Ms. Carmody.
I'm just putting in a plug. Vivian Carmody from the DDA for the second public input session on the Downtown Berkeley Design Guidelines, speaking of infill and all kinds of good stuff, a week from tomorrow, so March 7, Wednesday night, 6:30 to 8:30. It'll be an open house session. You'll be able to come in and see presentation boards that will cover each of the chapters of those design guidelines, and we'll have committee members and our consultants who will be there to answer questions, but it's a great opportunity for everybody in the community, our business owners, to come and give feedback on those guidelines and where they are now, because next step hopefully will be to bring them to a joint session of council and planning commission for the final document. So, we're pretty excited about where they are and eager to get that feedback.
Where is it?
Is that the Berkeley High School, if I recall?
Collaborative Center, yes.
Berkeley High School.
Are there any more citizen comments?
Hi, Annalise Petras. I live in Franklin in Berkeley. I just, I guess, would like to request that as we move forward with the new revising of master plan and...
You'll need to put the microphone down. I can barely hear you. Okay.
Oh, sorry. I think that after having attended just a couple of meetings over the past couple of months, that it seems like this is a great opportunity to do some team building with the community, and one way would be rather than to call us citizens or public, to call it community or community engagement. I think that is just more inclusive and would help the situation to kind of go forward. I also think that this process of revising the master plan will probably take quite some time, but there's a lot of measures that could go in place pretty quickly, like making the PUD application more than one page. That could help to have them work a little bit harder and also require a civil engineer on the applications that, rather than just an architectural site plan, something more precise and another professional. The other aspect that would be good would be to raise some of the application fees, just put some more skin in the game and be, have it be a little bit more serious, and also, you know, pay for these continued meetings. So, that's kind of my input for now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize for what I said.
You would have noticed sooner. Thank you.
Are there any more comments? Thank you. We'll move to the first order of business. Okay. First order of business is a discussion on the ordinance regarding automobile showrooms. So, I would like Mr. McClain to introduce this, please.
We've had some inquiries about rules regarding automobile showrooms, both on Woodward and 11 Mile. From your report, you can see that right now in the Woodward District, automobile showrooms are permitted, but there is no outdoor display or sales. My mind, that makes it highly unlikely that a showroom would whatever open, and that may have been the wishes of the council and the planning commission when that ordinance was enacted. That was before my time.
The one mile long Woodward District, right? 12 and 11. So, okay.
Yep. Yeah. Exactly. Currently, you can do auto sales on 11 Mile. You can do outdoor sales, but it has to be completely enclosed, either within a building or a large, you know, masonry wall, you know, not less than eight inches thick. So, we had one gentleman who's looking to expand a business that he has on 11 Mile. He'd inquired about whether or not outdoor displays would ever be permitted on Woodward. Staff in the building department have informed me that they get this question often, so I felt it was time to revisit this subject with the planning commission. Now, is this something that we're, are we content with the status quo? Do we want to consider making some changes? Looking for a little direction.
Well, I could give you a little bit of history.
I would like some history. Marty's not here, so David.
Yeah, I can give you a little bit of history on that. To go way back, to go way, way back, we did have a Ford dealership on the corner of Coolidge and 12 Mile, where the shopping center is, when I first came here, was a Ford dealership. Ultimately, that dealership was sold, and it moved to 10 Mile and Greenfield. And your dealership you see there now, and you can see the physical size of what was.
Okay.
And look at that piece of land we had here, and you had a bigger Ford dealership. We also had a Plymouth dealership on the corner of Robina and 12 Mile Road, and the, would be on the southeast corner, in that building that was there. Now, they did have a little more room to the rear of it, but again, it eventually went away. It was Plymouth and Dodge dealership was there. The issue is as to why we don't have it on Woodward right now, and we limited it to 11 Mile Road is, I think primarily we were looking at the amount of land necessary for dealerships and the depth of the land on Woodward. And then there was the issue of if you're going to have cars parked out there on the side, you're going to have lighting and all that, and leading into the back of the neighborhoods and what have you. So, most of the members of the planning commission at that time felt that dealerships on 12 Mile Road were not around Woodward, were not of, you couldn't really have a good sustainable business on Woodward with that kind of thing without more land and going deeper into the property, and especially with Oakland Manor adjacent up to the 12 Mile area. Yeah, that would get really kind of ugly back up in there with their deed restrictions and what have you. So, that's part of the reason. Now, it went to 11 Mile, and there was limited amount at the time, anyone that was interested in it. We did have a dealership, I should say there was one on Woodward that, I can't remember what he was selling, but anyway, he moved across the street to where DMI was, and he was in there for a while, but he only had that where the bridal shop was on Woodward. He had that little bit, but he didn't do any servicing of automobiles there. He just primarily sold vehicles, and that was high-end vehicles, Mercedes and onward, that kind of stuff, Ferraris and that kind of stuff. And he moved, and then he's gone. So, Woodward, I think, is, I'm not sure how this planning commission feels at this juncture, but in the days past, Woodward was kind of let off. Now, on 11 Mile, we have the facilities, Facilities Matrix, Matrix Motors is on, and we approved that, and...
But not as an auto showroom?
Not as an auto showroom. He was more or less, he was selling cars in there and doing some maintenance work.
Well, he was wholesale, so he was buying...
Buying and selling.
You know, smashed cars. He was fixing them, and he was selling them.
Keeping the cars that he was wholesaling on the site, or was he just a wholesale?
Originally, he had to be within the walled area.
He had to be within a walled area. He was buying them. They were totaled, and he was rehabbing them and selling them off, so there wasn't like...
On that site, he was rehabbing them there.
Yeah, in that building.
And he wasn't, he, it wasn't like random people showing up to buy them. He was kind of like a middleman.
Now, he's expanded to the adjacent property there.
Wanted that property, I think.
Yep. And now he's got Bucu Autos sitting out there on 11 Mile, and I don't know whether he's...
So, there's parking considerations?
There's parking considerations, and he's got...
Customer parking considerations.
And he's got the, a lot of automobiles parked there, too.
Well, there's the stock, and then there's customer stock.
Yep.
Lighting.
Yep.
Security, maintenance.
And so, I don't know how that got approved, to be honest with you.
I don't think it did get approved. I think it just, it bled into the space, and I don't think he's, I don't think he's out of compliance with what, I don't think he's out of, you know, he's in a nonconforming use.
Yep.
And I don't think, it's just frankly, our ordinance didn't contemplate that.
Right. So, now the question is, should we reopen and look at the ordinance?
Well, I think we should. I mean, certainly, I mean, we can talk about the Woodward ordinance, and I don't think it's any different than, say, our, you know, Royal Oak. They have, you know, they clearly allow car dealerships up Woodward, and then if you get into Birmingham, it's a little different for parts of it, and then...
They do for parts of it, but not all of it.
Depends on what district you're in of Woodward.
They all meet our ordinance.
When you're south of Maple.
Yeah. They got land, though. They've all got land.
Yeah. When you're south of Maple, they don't have lots. It's all inside, and when you're north of Maple, it's different. Well, actually, yeah, yeah, it's different. Okay. So, I mean, we don't have a ton of land on Woodward, and we only have the one side of Woodward. I wouldn't want to see it becoming, frankly, a giant car dealership, but I guess if they cobbled it together, we, if somebody...
Actually, the one space is just something were to happen at some point to Westbourne Market. That could be easily turned into a car dealership.
Or North Point.
Or North Point. Yep.
That's a pretty big piece of property.
It could. That could happen. Those are the two areas where they currently have the land.
So, we would have to look at what do we, you know, I'm not sure what the commission's ideas are on that. And 11 Mile, there's not the depth there of the lots, but there's the width.
Right.
Certainly, there seems to be a lot of property that's kind of unused along there, so what's wrong with a wide car dealership?
A wide track dealership.
I don't know, but I do think it needs to be addressed, in particular, since we do have the situation at hand.
Well, I have a question. I'm not aware of any, of any land along Woodward that I would consider having immediate potential for a car dealership. Is anyone else on the commission aware of land like that? I mean... No. I mean, you have the depth of the land, where Westbourne is or North Point is. Well, I know. That's Westbourne, and then there's the clinic, but... You don't have any more depth of land where you could put a major dealership in. You're not going to, you're not going to convert those sites anytime soon.
No.
So, the rest of it is, I think, of limited potential for this use due to the lighting and security and all of that sort of thing encroaching on the Oakland Manor neighborhood. I think, I think we're, I think we're asking for some controversy if we, if we tackle changes designed to get a dealership on that stretch.
So, I think the uses permitted are articulated fine in the current ordinance, then, for the Woodward District? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I can't, off the top of my head, enumerate all those uses, but...
No. I mean, well, it is, it's...
It's one of the, yeah, it is a use.
The difficulty in what we have in our ordinance right now is most car dealerships usually display their cars and store their cars outdoors.
Right. So, the Woodward District excludes that.
Right.
And so does 11 Mile.
Right. Well, no. 11 Mile allows it. It just has to be a wall.
Behind a wall. Behind a wall.
So, let's tackle Woodward for right now.
Okay.
All right. So, what you're saying...
I guess my point is that, yes, it would be infeasible to locate a modern car dealership along that stretch, given our ordinance, but if we were to change the ordinance to encourage that use, I think we're going to run into a lot of problems with the adjacent neighborhood and with the suitability of the land along Woodward to begin with.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering whether it's worth the coin to get into that.
Sure.
I guess that's my point.
I think, I think, you know, Mr. McClain merely brought up this on the agenda and as an item because of the situation on 11 Mile, but because we have the ordinance on 11, on Woodward, that we needed to address them both at the same time.
Yeah.
And there's nothing wrong with suggesting that or to say that the Woodward District is fine as it stands.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And moving on to address the 11 Mile District. But we should discuss it.
We should discuss it. I'm not against discussing it.
Yeah. We should discuss it to see, like, is it still relevant today?
Yeah.
Does it need to be addressed? Does it need to be modernized, or does it fit our needs? So, discussion, let's kind of move down the table. Ms. Kepalonsky?
Sure. So, when I was first reading through this, I was concerned if we were to allow the outdoor display about light levels was my big concern. And we did bring up those couple parcels that might be large enough to accommodate a big enough setback in screening.
On the Woodward?
Yep. To allow for that sort of thing. On the other side of the coin, I mean, this is our auto-oriented district, so if you're not going to allow outside car sales in your auto district, where are they going to be permitted? So, I'm kind of at a 50/50 for this. If this were to be changed to allow for this sort of use, I'd want it as a special land use with lots of protections in there, particularly for buffers and light levels, and screening in the back only. I don't think we need to screen, and this gets a little bit into the 11 Mile, but I don't see the point in screening from adjacent uses that are business uses or along the front. That's all I have.
Okay. Ms. Moret?
Kind of what I was going to go with is, you know, I remember back from my citizen planner training, one of the things that you're taught is you can't necessarily prohibit a use just because you don't want it, or you don't see there's, you know, a good location for it. And they weren't talking usually about car dealerships or auto sales, but, you know, so I don't have a problem keeping it in the Woodward District or even the 11 Mile District. I think the idea of the outdoor display or the storage behind a wall, they could do a special land use, maybe, that maybe that's the way to go. You know, so then they'd have to come before us to get approval for the special land use of displaying not behind a wall or not storage everything in a building. And same with 11 Mile. Because, I mean, really, if you're trying to sell automobiles, you don't want them behind a wall that people are driving by and can't see. Especially used vehicles, because, you know, somebody that's running around looking for used vehicles, or even not, you know, they might, oh, that's, looks like a good deal. Maybe I'll pull in and take a look at it, so.
Ms. Moret?
I have mixed feelings. I'm sort of halfway there, halfway against the Woodward Avenue piece of it. I'm not sure about that yet. I would be deeply concerned about the Oakland Manor area. I could see it more where Westbourne was or is and North Point, but beyond that, when you start moving down Woodward north from that point, from Catelpa on, it gets a little dicey there. 11 Mile. Matrix Motors, let's talk about Matrix Motors. Matrix Motors first came to the planning commission to build a building, that little building that they built, and so they put that up at the front on 11 Mile Road with the automobiles being stored in the rear, and that's why there's, it was wall-walled then, and we made them all at all in. I'm more open to 11 Mile and allowing display area facing 11 Mile and using wall, walling it in on the residential side, the north side of the land. I could go for that easier than I could with Woodward right now. But, yeah, we could change the 11 Mile thing. I think that's doable.
Jadel?
Yeah, I'd hate to speculate what may be available in the future as far as locations for such a business. I think that, you know, we have one vision of what that might look like, and some very creative business owner might have a very... you know, we have one vision of what that might look like and some very creative business owner might have a very different vision. So I, I'd hate to make any changes based solely on where we think it might be. I'm not comfortable doing that. Frankly, I can go a couple of ways on this. I'm very, um, very comfortable with where, um, it is and when it pertains to Woodward at the moment. I don't think that, um, requiring a completely enclosed building, um, eliminates a car dealership. Frankly, I think that could attract a high-end car dealership if any. So I, I don't think that we need to have conditions for the purpose of eliminating a use. I think we should just eliminate the use. Right, I mean, if that's, if that's the goal, then we should just eliminate the use. So I, I, I'm comfortable leaving it as it is. Um, I'm also very comfortable exploring special land use. And I think we'd have to be very careful, um, about what that would, what that would contain. And we've got some, um, yeah, the proximity, I think, is, is the issue. We just need to be very conscientious and transparent with what that would have to contain.
Uh, I'm not torn about it on Woodward. I think, uh, we should keep it as it is on Woodward. You know, Royal Oak does have a few dealerships on Woodward, but they've also got about five miles of Woodward frontage, whereas we have only one. And, you know, Woodward Avenue is one of the most prominent streets in all of Michigan and I just think that that's not necessarily the face you want to put forward on one of the most prominent streets of Michigan for your city. We allow it in a showroom right now. That is basically going to be a specialty type of auto dealer. And in my mind, that's an appropriate kind of use for that kind of frontage. Uh, whereas, you know, a sea of cars out on pavement is really not appropriate for that particular frontage. With the amount of land that we have available really on any of our streets in Berkeley, you're not going to be looking at any of the major automakers looking at opening a dealership in the city really ever. I mean, there's a reason Ford doesn't have a dealership at Coolidge and Twelve Mile anymore. It's a postage stamp and they, they want fourteen acres, you know, and you just, it's not available in Berkeley. So even when you think about Eleven Mile, which has a more industrial character, you're still looking at amounts of land that are going to, to hue toward, well, there's two types of auto, auto dealers who might be interested in, in land on Eleven Mile. One is specialty auto dealers and the other is used vehicles. Because that's really the two types of, of dealer that could deal with that amount of land. On, on Eleven Mile, I am open to exploring the idea of outdoor display as a special land use. One accessory to a dealership that has some sort of indoor operation as well. You know, I don't want a kiosk with a bunch of cars outdoor, but if they've got some sort of legit auto operation, okay, we can talk about outdoor display and you don't have to put it around, put a wall around it because obviously that's not display. But again, uh, to echo what a couple of the other commissioners said prior to me, um, if we are going to do that, making it a special land use gives us the opportunity to set some conditions for how we want a special land use to operate. And I think we really need to think hard about what those conditions would be and how they would, you know, protect the neighborhood behind.
Can I ask one question? When you say like a legit operation versus a kiosk, you mean like a full-service building?
Yeah, exactly. Like a real showroom type of building or related repair operation or something like that, you know, where it's not just, it's, it's not just a superficial building that kind of puts a Band-Aid on, on a parking lot, more or less.
Okay, very good. Ms. Kepner?
Um, I would have to agree, while it, on some level, it makes sense that you would have a showroom of car, you know, a fleet of cars on Woodward. On the other hand, it, it just, I don't know, that's not what I want to see while I'm coming into Berkeley. Um, so I prefer to keep that Woodward one as it is. Um, and I would agree with Eleven Mile being more of a special land use. I don't know what's in store for Eleven Mile when we start to look at the master plan. I know that there's been a lot of talk, even think at our open house, where people said, maybe that's where you put some of your multifamily. So I don't know what we're going to do with that. So if it was a special land use, we would be able to protect whatever might be around it or whatever we might envision going around it in the future.
And I, if I could add, I, I don't think I commented on Eleven Mile.
No, you, you were totally on Woodward.
I was harping on Woodward.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with, uh, Commissioner Kepner and Commissioner Tang Jerry and I, I believe, uh, the sentiments expressed by other commissioners. I think, uh, Eleven Mile is, uh, potentially appropriate for special land use treatment, given the character of Eleven Mile and the depth of the lots there.
Well, I'm a little bit on the fence. Uh, I would not want to see a very large car dealership on Woodward, certainly. I would want to see maybe a, if anything, on Woodward, um, a specialty one. I, I, I like kind of the indoor one. I think of the one on Woodward just south of Fifteen Mile in Birmingham. I mean, I could see something like that, but, um, right now, I'm not inclined to move the Woodward ordinance, I mean personally, and I don't think there's a great deal of energy around changing that one. Unless I'm wrong. I think we're good. Uh, but the Eleven Mile one, um, I think there is some movement there. So I would ask Mr. McLean to maybe draft some language for us to contemplate in a future meeting.
So that Mr. McLean doesn't have to draft it.
Oh.
Three times? Should we maybe give him a little bit of guidance as to what we might want?
Okay, that's fine. I mean, all right, let's go ahead and do that.
Maybe we require it to, the, the storage of the cars be behind walls, but they can do a special land use request to not do that, but still any property line that is adjacent to a residential, even if it's like on a side street, that's going to have to have a wall.
So no wall on Eleven Mile?
So, yeah, no wall on Eleven Mile. So like if you, if you look at the, the original Matrix Motor building, when they first built that building, they had a small parking area in the front and then the wall and gate was all behind it. And part of that wall along the side street was there because there was, if I'm not mistaken, some residential.
Yeah.
Okay. So definitely at the rear, but the one at the west edge of the property technically wouldn't have had to be there because it was still commercial.
It's commercial. But what about on the east edge? Oh, well, yeah, let me back.
On the east edge, yeah, I'm saying.
Yeah, because that's commercial.
East edge, wherever, wherever the property abuts residential, it has to have a wall.
Yep, okay. So the south edge, no, because that would be commercial.
Right, the south edge is facing Eleven Mile now.
And the.
So when they built theirs, they had a gate there.
But the east edge, because it's commercial, no.
Right.
But there, they have it on the east edge.
Yeah, but I think part of. Yeah, but they extended that when they did like some remodeling, they extended that to the front of the parking lot because I think they were getting overflow of cars.
Couple different types of fences there.
Yeah. Wasn't, wasn't one of the issues that he had junkers, he had smashed up cars.
Smash cars, you'd bring in the fix.
One of the big, yeah, the siding and.
And we didn't want to see that.
So, so. Or we could even allow a percentage of display space unwalled facing Eleven Mile. There's a lot.
There's different options there.
As long as you're not displaying your junkers.
Right, so I, I think that if you have display space, it does, commercial doesn't need to be screened from commercial. It should only be screened from residential. But could we put something in there where the cars that are displayed have to have a license plate and be in good repair?
Well, not a license plate, but they have to be saleable.
In good repair, yeah.
In good repair.
And we have to be drivable.
Yeah, saleable, yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're only displaying vehicles that you're selling.
Right.
You know, you're, if, if a vehicle's under repair or it's missing a tire or something, it's not on display. It's behind the wall.
It needs to be in the fenced area or the wall area.
Yeah, I'm one hundred percent agreement, yeah.
Another question, Tim, what's the maximum height for light poles? Do you know in our ordinance offhand?
I will find out.
So I, I would suggest a limit of fifteen feet?
Yes, definitely.
And do we want to have a, uh, percent of the lot that needs to be covered by structure? How do we want to deal with the structure issue?
I don't know what we have now for commercial because particularly on Eleven Mile, I mean, a lot of those are.
I don't think there's a minimum in there.
There is no minimum and I'm not sure there's a maximum. There's a lot of, there's a fairly high percentage covered by structural because of the nature of their business where they don't have to have commercial parking. So I think that would be part of the special land use, um, consideration, like how much public parking would be needed. Right now, like right now, Matrix Motors doesn't need any more than, you know, the parking spaces needed for its employees. But if, and I mean, this doesn't just apply to Matrix Motors, it would apply to anybody who would, you know, buy a parcel and turn it into a similar operation. If you were to have, um, a commercial sales operation, you would expect there would be not only employees but customers, so there would need to be some kind of parking and the parking isn't going to be on the side streets.
Yep.
So we would have to consider that at the time. So I think that would be part of the special land use consideration.
Currently, parking spaces, it's in this report, seven per one thousand square feet of showroom plus one per three hundred and fifty square feet of service bay.
Okay.
I think we can maybe migrate, migrate that to a per service bay standard rather than a square footage of service bay.
Per.
Per service bay rather than per square foot, feet of service bay, the three hundred and fifty feet of service bay. I don't know that that's really, it's kind of a weird, it's kind of a weird standard, you know, you're going to get fractional service bays.
Right, per service bay.
For everyone's edification, lights on poles, including the bay, shall not be taller than the building whose area they illuminate nor taller than twenty feet, whichever is shorter.
Okay.
So could we move that to fifteen?
Yeah, we could. I think that'd be a good idea with LED lighting and all that.
And we can require shields.
And shields.
Shields on the, the backside of that.
Yep.
Well, I think.
Because they'd be in walled areas too, they would have additional security so they can reduce some lighting requirements.
The special land use ordinance doesn't have to spell out every one of these conditions though, right? It, it, it should have language saying appropriate in the judgment of the, of the commission, I think.
Absolutely.
Certain things should be hard and fast, but others, others can be more discretionary, yeah. The, the less discretionary things are the simpler the approval processes, I guess.
Well, I, I think actually lighting should be something that should be discretionary because it'll be dependent on what they're backing up to because the housing heights are fifteen feet might be appropriate for a nineteen forties bungalow, but it's not going to be appropriate for a two thousand eighteen.
It's going to depend on the location of the structure as well as the outdoor shows.
Kind of hinge, I mean.
Some of the houses are much taller that are going in and I'm not sure if any of those are going into.
You want to set a zero foot candle at the edge of the property, you can do so.
Or if they, if somebody has put an apartment over a garage in the backyard.
I think you do need a base standard such as zero foot candles extending, extending over the property line. You know, uh, you can also, you know, set a minimum distance of illumination from the property line. But, uh, you know, if you've got, if you've got your other standards in order, that's probably not necessary.
I was going to say, we don't, I don't know that we have any. Do we have any of our ordinance as they get that specific?
No, we don't.
Rather we deal with that in the special use permit.
I, I think I tend to disagree. I like having all of the lighting level standards laid out in terms of pole height, max intensity for the side, full cutoff fixtures, zero foot candles, the whole deal.
Right, really, and you, your average to minimum ratios, you can set all of those things in a, in a, in an ordinance.
Our planners are in cahoots.
And, and really, the reason you do it is to, is to achieve uniformity throughout your community. You know, you're protecting the neighbors, but you're also, you're also giving the community a look and feel, you know.
Then when site plans come before us, we know it's a given. We don't have to.
Exactly.
And it provides some assurance for businesses.
What we're supposed to be trying to achieve with the redevelopment-ready communities anyways, right? You're supposed to be able to easily tell what you need.
Right, you need to have wiggle room in these ordinances. There's always going to be that, that situation where you want to add a condition or you want to ease up on a condition.
Well, you can always place conditions on an approval, but, but more to the point, you can always have some provision where the planning commission finds that no good purpose would be served by, you know, what, some standard. Then you have an ability to waive or reduce the standard.
Right.
But you got to have the standard in the first place.
Right, a starting point.
I like fifteen feet and I like zero foot candles at the edge of the property line.
Do we want to establish, start establishing that here and are we going to carry that through on other ordinances?
I think that would carry to the other light, to the lighting ordinance in general.
I think it's a lighting ordinance.
I think it's a lighting ordinance. I think it's generally lighting all the way.
Well, I, I, okay, okay, stop, 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 stop for a minute.
Sorry.
Let's stop for a minute. I, um, I want to contemplate it. So put it in writing so that we can see it.
Yeah.
I want to see how this affects, um, not only this proposed special use, but how it would come into play on some of our other ordinances that we have. Like just pick a few others to see like where we are in or out of compliance with that, if you will, for lack of a better term. Like, well, wait, because we might be opening a can of worms that if we set this new standard, everybody else that comes forward is set to a standard that is different than everybody else before them came to. And now they are set to a more harsh standard than everybody else. And it may be for the greater good, but it may be more problematic. So we need to contemplate this because I do agree with Mark that there needs to be some wiggle room. Berkeley, um, I mean, I seem to recall, where is Marty? Where, and where is Marty in my ear telling me that I'm being draconian? Because he would be screaming that you were being draconian on this.
I know.
Because that's the word, that's the word that's coming through my head. Uh, because that is part of Berkeley's charm is that we do contemplate everything that comes across our desk and try to make it fit the situation and make it match, so. Because if we do set one standard for everything, it makes this kind of cookie cutter and I know it makes it easy, but it doesn't make it the same. It doesn't make it right.
I think we can find a balance.
Yes, we can find a balance. So at least let us look at it, but we also want to see where, how this would affect and how this would domino down.
Madam Chair, one of the things we talked about last month when we had the discussion about things to work on, is we talked about the fact that we really need to redo our whole zoning ordinance.
Sure, sure.
This could also be a step in that direction as to set a standard of how we want to redo this.
But that would be a whole lighting ordinance and we're talking about a special use.
I understand that.
We're talking about automotive special use in one separate section. And I'm not sure this is where we want to launch a lighting use as in our special use on, in, in one separate district. It might be, but it needs a larger audience because we need to think about how it would be affected throughout the entire Berkeley, so.
So my personal feeling would be that the pole height makes sense here to limit the pole height for this particular use because auto dealerships have very bright lights. But getting into other standards, I guess I was talking more about a general lighting ordinance. I, I think it would be a mistake to set specific lighting standards for each use.
Yes, I agree with you.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so I, I, so I understand. So for this purpose, I agree with you and this might be exactly it and we do need to talk about something larger, but for right now, let's see what it looks like. Put it in there, we'll talk about it, but.
One other thing, not, not, not about illuminating, uh, topics, but yeah, on, on Eleven Mile, we have the, uh, wall requirement. I think that, uh, we, we, we're in pretty much in agreement about the, uh, property, the wall abutting residential property. Do we want to address the sidewalls? Be, because.
I think we briefly talked about, everyone was like.
We briefly talked about it.
Commercial to commercial was unnecessary and commercial to side street to commercial was unnecessary.
Well, the, okay, the, certainly. Well, okay, certainly the Love Mile frontage is unnecessary, but 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 what about the between commercial lots?
Unnecessary. I mean, I I would agree with that. And frankly, I'm not sure that six feet would, in my opinion, I'm not sure six feet would be enough even between a residential. I might would wanna see that higher. I'm not sure if that was the correct cold medicine. I would want to see that higher. Why not eight feet to a residential? What with six feet, that's like the size of, that's my fence in the backyard. That's only if I'm at ground level. If I'm on my deck, I'm right looking into there.
Perhaps Mr. McLean can can put a put a figure out there with a rationale behind it.
What's a reasonable wall height? That's a safe wall height. I mean, I'm not sure what people can build safely, so. Please draft something with all the comments that you heard and maybe some options for us. And we don't want eight, six meetings on this. We certainly don't want this turning into stoop versus porch.
Doesn't, no, we don't need to get there.
I will get to work on it.
For those who remember stoop versus porch, do you not remember stoop versus porch? That was a great discussion, but it went on pretty too many meetings. Okay.
Do you do you know the difference?
Yes, I do know the difference. I also know the difference of roof height and flat roof, hip roof. Those are all great discussions. Okay, can we move to the next discussion? All right, discussion, public participation plan, developing a participation plan. So we had five examples, City of East Lansing, City of Escanaba, City of Manistee, City of Ferndale, and what was the other one? I can't remember off the top of my head.
Muskegon.
Muskegon. So size-wise, we probably fall closest to Ferndale. Culture-wise, probably closest to Ferndale. So what I, and I went to the redevelopment-ready or redevelopment-ready communities website and looked at their guidance. Very generic. And all of these plans kind of follow the same format. And so my, this might be the cold medicine talking. So my initial thoughts on some of these are, these are very ambitious. And some of them, some of these plans are a little bit largely unachievable. I mean, from a practical standpoint, yes, I would want to see all of these things happen. But from a practical standpoint, we are a resource limited community. And we can attempt to do some of these things, but we cannot achieve all of these things. You know, the Ferndale plan in particular, the verbiage in it is just, if I look at it from a prag, as a pragmatist, I'm like, I, we can't achieve some of these things. But I think we can write a plan that certainly engages the community. And I think defining how we're gonna engage the community upfront is gonna be the important part. Because, you know, to, the language is very broad in some of these plans. And so our community, our citizens, our residents, our, I'm not sure what the other term I'm supposed to use besides that, wants to be engaged. That's great, that's fantastic, that's amazing. But we have to find a way to make that happen that is both expedient and we get results out of it. It doesn't get frustrating for people along the way. And at the end of the day, we have what we need to make this happen. And I I I would like to see maybe some of the results. Have there been any tune-ups from some of these plans? Have there been any feedback on some of these plans? I don't know, Tim. And have you had any experience from your previous jobs with putting these plans in order? And maybe Mr. Tangeri and Ms. Kapalansky can give feedback on their communities that they work with on these plans that they've put into play. So Ms. Kapalansky, can you maybe comment on some of these things?
Oh, sure. So I thought the plans borrowed heavily off of one another.
So I wasn't just, I wasn't, it wasn't the cold medicine that I kept reading the same thing over and over.
And they all gave very generic statements and I, in my opinion, didn't provide a lot of guidance about specific things that you could do and action items. I think that's, a public participation plan is a good is a good starting point, but I don't think it's gonna provide your day-to-day operations of how you're reaching out to the public. And I don't think ours will either.
But I think it needs to.
And I think that would be tough to do. Personally, I do. One of the things that I thought was interesting that was in some of the plans, but not all of them, was it was, this was in the Ferndale plan, talking about reaching out for low and high controversy site plans. And I, what is the threshold and how do you determine what is gonna be a high and a low controversy? Because in my experience, there have been projects that you thought were not gonna raise any red flags and they turned into a big ordeal. So I would be a little bit leery about including something like that just because it's it's impossible to to identify something that's most definitely going to be a low controversy project. I mean, anything could bring the public out. So I would want to treat all the site plans the same as far as what kind of engagement and involvement we do to reach out. One of the things that some communities do, I think that's a good way to notify notify the public, and it's something that doesn't require a lot of effort on our part, but it makes sure it gets the word out to everyone, is to place a sign on the property. So a developer would be required to put rezoning proposed, special land use proposed. You know, for information, please contact the community development department at such and such a number. It would be at no cost to the city for them, for us to require that, and anyone that drives by would see it. So I think that's something that we could include. As far as other general thoughts, it was nice to see the master plan process outlined in several of these. I think that's helpful for everyone.
I think that was good.
And then a couple of them included some goals about continuous improvement and keeping up with technology. I think we should try to to lean heavily on those sorts of things, because obviously things are moving that way. But they're also a lower cost way to reach out. You're not sitting there stuffing a whole bunch of envelopes. You can send one email out. So I don't know if there's a creative way to to do that. I don't know that anyone's identified that yet, but it's, we can get more bang for our buck.
Sure. Okay, Mr. Tangeri, have you had any feedback on some of the communities you've worked with on how, when they've implemented these plans? On what, what's come back from them, like the public's feedback on them?
I mean, generally speaking, I think people like to have information available to them, you know, in terms of what the processes are. Daylighting your processes is one of the most valuable things you can do with a plan like this. And it's, that's not just like a master plan process, that's also so that people know how the development review process goes as well. You know, I really think you you have an opportunity to shed light on on how things work, how some, how a plan works its way through. Is there a pre-application process that takes place at the city offices? You know, what happens during that process, what what comes out of that? Just so people know, really, and and I can't really think of a better place to put it than a plan like this. So that people understand, here's what happened or likely happened prior to it reaching this body. And now we're all in a public meeting talking about it. So that's one valuable thing. I completely agree about the controversy threshold. That is a totally impossible thing to anticipate. I've had meetings where I've walked in thinking, oh, here we go, this is gonna be a long one. And it's just me and the planning commission and no, nobody came. And I can't figure out why, because I thought it was gonna be really controversial. And then I've had other things where I figured, well, you know, this looks pretty basic. And then it turns out it's not basic at all, you know? I I really just think that trying to game that out in advance is is impossible. I just think you're holding yourself to 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 a standard that you can't meet. So I think you really have to treat everything the same and your outreach has to, you know, begin the same way. And, you know, obviously, there's a statutory level of outreach and that's something that should be published in this plan. But we should also publish the ways in which we're going to go above and beyond the statutory requirement. And I think that making that clear will help the process. I think another thing that you can do in these plans is establish a review process, like a three-year review process. You know, master plans have a five-year review process, RRC is a five-year process. But if you establish a shorter review, you look at it every three years, here's our public participation plan, are we doing this? Is it going well? Is there something that needs to be added, something that isn't, that needs to be subtracted, you know? I think really kind of setting a schedule for review is a good way to 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 manage any plan. But something like this in particular, you're probably going to be getting feedback on it all the time. You can accumulate that feedback. And then every couple of years, we just sort of lay it out in a meeting like this where we don't have anything else in the agenda and just talk about it. Is it working like we thought it was going to work? And if not, what do we need to do to tweak it? And what else was I just gonna say? I forgot to write this one down. Shoot.
You can come back to that.
Completely slipped my mind. But anyway, you know, obviously, there is a certain template to these things. And and that's fine, you know, I mean, if somebody's got a good template, steal it and use it. I mean, it makes sense, you know, I I mean, this is all in the public domain. So there's no, there's no need to be shy about using a good idea, just because it came from somewhere else. And also, oh, but the other thing I wanted to say is, yes, there are things that seem impractical and unpragmatic in some of these plans. But to a degree, any plan is going to be aspirational. And I think that having a couple of things that are gonna be a distant reach in there is not a bad idea, you know?
I would agree with that. A distant reach is good. I would agree that there has to be a plan to get to them, though. There has to be a methodology. So I like your idea about the daylighting the process. And I've asked Mr. McLean and I've asked Matt several times for flow chart, for lack of a better term, of our processes for the application process, for site plan review, for PUD, for whatever else that comes before this board, even zoning board of appeals, so that the community, did I use the right word? Okay, very good. Understands the process. Because I do believe that a lot of people don't understand the process. So that frustrates them when they come to the microphone and they're like, blah, 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 blah. And I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm not discounting your concerns or your feelings. But there is a process that's laid out for the applicant and the applicant may have followed it correctly. And it results in X and we judge X and it frustrates the community. But that is the process. So I think if that were laid out more clearly, so that people could see, it would then bring up points of, I don't like this process here. I don't like this here, let's change that. So then that's a point of discussion versus just, I don't like this endpoint. I didn't like, this is where this, this is where the the process changed for me. So I think that would be part of our public participation process is that.
Madam Chair, in my spare time, I've actually been working on a guide to development.
Right, okay.
Commissioner Kapalansky's been offering some helpful feedback. I've got a very rough draft. It does include a flow chart, you know, regarding development. And based on what I'm hearing here, I'm thinking there could be some more tweaks to this guide to development. And I think a lot of what would be in a public participation, public participation plan would be in this guide to development.
So if you think like a project management class or a project manager, even the little stuff like I, I tend to, as a project manager, skip over, you know, three, four steps and bundle them. But most project managers, you know, trainers would be like, nope, you have to break out each one. And they do have to, because they do, you know, each one, each step, if there's a decision point at them or some, you know, different input. So we do have to bust them out and then we can decide to bundle them up if they're, you know, a different process or break them out separately. The, just because there's a template out there and it's industry accepted and or here, whoever accepts these plans, doesn't mean that ours has to exactly follow it just to get accepted. There's no reason we can't bu- bust that mold and make a better mousetrap. And because we are Berkeley, we should, we should aspire to something higher.
The only reason to break it is to make it better.
Yes, exactly. So we know, we we know at least what the 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 flow of the objectives and and goals and whatnot of the the document have to be. But we think that the content should be true and it should be achievable and it should be a stretch. And there should be a plan in there for those things that are a stretch. But they should reflect who we are and what we are as a community and what we want to be. And they shouldn't just be some boilerplate language that someone came up with in order to get into some program. Because that's not what we're about. So I guess I, this is a, the document itself. I was thinking tonight on how, or this afternoon and at lunch today, on how to tackle this. And I was thinking that this might be a subcommittee task to outline.
Can I? I have been doing a lot of research, right? And there are actually some great how to create, how to create a participation plan. I don't think we need to go all the way from ground zero, but one of the big things is you can't have a public participate if they're not knowledgeable. Like you have to make education a huge part of that plan so that they understand, they understand the process. They understand where they can influence a decision and when they can't influence the decision. But one of the things I would love to see with the subcommittee is also working with some members of the public, because they are there, they know what they need to hear. And how best to reach them to try and do that. So I think that would be ideal to start working on some methods in, including the public in having a committee to kind of tweak whatever we have.
And I agree that that would be for certain elements, like the the education elements. I I think to like draft a plan, though, to start, we would need to start with planning committee and then have some outreach on some of those elements as they came up. Because it gets, but I do agree that we do need a public participation element of the public participation plan.
We made this public participation plan and we didn't ask anybody what they thought.
No, 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 no.
What would be the drawback from involving the the community from the beginning?
How do you identify which resident should be on the committee?
Right.
Who appoints them?
Yeah.
I think it complicates things rather than going through your standard public outreach process.
I mean, I think you can start with the, with some people who have really committed to try and be part of the process up till now, right? And I think you look at like, so we need some seniors, you know, whether that's people say, hey, I want to, and the city manager goes through that or our.
But Lisa, you are those people. So our city council was elected by the residents of Berkeley. And the city council then appointed us to represent in this fashion. So we would take a subcommittee of that to just initially draft this plan that then is up for open comment in this forum. So that is why we're here. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't need another iteration. In my, and that's my opinion, I I I think that we we've already gone through that. It gets, I don't know, I mean, everybody's experiences in life are different. But we're talking about drafting a first document and we're using Matt to pull together some of the education elements, which are kind of technical in nature, because the actual, what is the technical aspect of how? because the actual, what is the technical aspect of how it, what is the, what is the process of getting, say, a permit? Like even if as a, as a homeowner, I want to go build a garage or something. What does that look like? I mean, that's kind of outside the purview of this, this document, but what does it look like? What do I do? I come to City Hall, what do I need? I get an application, I have to have a drawing, I need a plan, I need a signature, I need a this, I need a that, I need a fee, I need this, I have to have somebody come inspect for my construction, I have to have somebody inspect for my electrical, I have somebody inspect for this, whatever. So there's all of these, there's a flow chart for all of that, if you will. You can put it into a flow chart. And then there's, um, we can document that. Now, we can then send that to some kind of, some kind of public input session for, is it understandable from an education standpoint? And those are the elements you're talking about, like do they get the education aspect of it? But the process, you know, of how that takes place, that technical process, he can articulate that.
Sure.
So whether or not it's understandable, then we can get feedback.
Madam Chair.
I think, uh, go ahead.
Okay. If you appoint a committee and it has at least three members, I think it's subject to the Open Meetings Act and...
No, it's only if it's over, only if it's over quorum.
A subquorum committee is, is not, not bound by OMA.
Well, there's nothing to prevent that committee, though, from holding a public meeting.
You can, you can establish that its meetings are in public.
The committee can hold it however, however the committee chooses to hold it. As long as the committee, you know, if, 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 if we have a committee, so here's, here's what I'm suggesting.
What I'm saying is have a, have a committee, have a, have a, have a work session that's open to the public and, and that's going to involve the public from the get-go.
But that's not a committee.
Well, yes, it is.
That's all of us. A work session is...
The committee can have a work session.
Okay, wait, let me, let me back up, Mark. Okay, so if I, if I, if I appoint a committee to go draft this, how the committee chooses to do that within the three people of the committee, I don't care as long as they come back within the timeline assigned with a document to this body.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we have any disagreements, so I don't know why that can't be open.
So if you want to bring in your neighbors, if you want to bring in 20 people, if you want to bounce it off, I, that's fine. But it doesn't have to be that particular, it doesn't have to be one process or the other. You can talk to whoever you want along the way. If you want to do it as a work session, then we do it within this body. I mean, this is new for us to do it this, to do this kind of document. This is not a master plan, this is a, a different kind of document. And, I mean, it's kind of a voluntary document. We're required by law to do a master plan. We're not required by law to do a public participation document. We want to do a public participation document. And I want to do a public participation document and I think everybody here wants to do it. But I want to do it in an expedient fashion and I don't want to take up the, because right now, things are light. The last several years, our commission meetings have not been light and we don't have time to spend on drafting this out.
I think you...
We've had a full slate of agenda items and if agenda items like site plan reviews or whatnot come in, this gets by the wayside, so I want this to move forward.
Just saying very briefly, I, I don't have a problem with your committee, subcommittee idea and I, I don't see a problem with that committee involving the members of the public from the get-go, so I don't...
Right.
I really think that this concern can be addressed through this process.
What I, you know, city council, what, a year, year and a half ago, put together a citizens and advisory committee. So maybe that's where we go is we pull two people from that to be involved in this, to, to partner with the three planning commissioners to put this together.
How do you pick those two? Who picks those two?
City council.
Council.
Our council representative.
Right? You were on that committee, right? I mean, it's kind of been disbanded, but, right, or is it still active? I mean, you're not actively having meetings, but it might be something that the city should consider doing and then that committee can participate in things like this.
It's just, just an idea.
If we're, just a few thoughts. When you're crafting a plan like this, you know, one of the first steps is goal-setting. And when you're setting those goals, you're responding to something, right? You're responding to a need. Well, and, you know, I think we all have some idea of what the need is, but there could be room up front for some sort of, um, three-question survey that gives us some data on what we really need, you know? How do people feel about the way the city engages the public at present? And where is there room for improvement? I think we all have at least a sense of where there might be room for improvement, but, you know, it's just one, it's a thought that you could use a, a neutral instrument like a survey that, that everyone has an opportunity to respond to, should they choose to do so. And then you can take that data and it becomes an input to your goal-setting process.
Are you talking about the goals for the public participation process that are in these documents? That are almost all the same in all the public participation process documents here?
Yeah, I mean, basically, yeah, you do have to set some goals for your plan.
Yeah, I get it, but they're almost all the same.
Well, yeah, exactly. That's why I'm saying we get some input and then ours aren't the same because we're actually responding to real input.
Okay, fine, fair enough, but did all of these communities go out and poll their...
I guarantee you, they did not.
Okay, all right. So I'm okay with...
That's, that's why their goals are all the same.
All right, so I'm okay with, let me, let, let, let me finish, let me finish. So I'm okay with the idea of going out and polling our community, our community and finding some way to get the idea of how, what, you know, to set those goals for our public participation document.
Right, exactly, and that's what I'm talking about.
And I also want to state that, I, I'm guessing that most of these documents were drafted by a consultant?
Almost all of them, probably.
By someone like you or Ms. Kapilansky or, no, you work for the, you work for the county, so by somebody like, uh...
Yeah, a planning consultant, most likely.
So we are gonna draft our own kind of internally? Because, because we have those resources and we do not have the, we do not have the external dollar or we don't have the dollars for external resources to do this, so we're gonna kind of draft internally. So...
Yeah, we don't have a planner of record at the moment to farm it out to, basically. We've got Tim and us.
Well, we also don't have the, we don't have the finances to do that. So we'll, we will do this ourselves. So that being said, um, you know, that kind of limits how we can poll the community, like what resources we have, you know, we can do Survey Monkey if we have a robust set of, you know? I mean, it gets really complicated when you want to poll the city of Berkeley, what, 24,000 residents, I think, somewhere in there?
15,000.
16,000, sorry. I don't know why I have 24,000 in my head.
Used to.
I used to have 24,000. So 16,000 residents and how we poll all 16,000 residents through Survey Monkey or through paper surveys. And I think our last survey, um, for the, the last survey we did, Tim, um, the, was it the Community Center? How many survey responses did we get? I can't recall, it wasn't very many, but we...
You won't get that many.
We don't have unlimited resources to do that and I want to be practical because I want that feedback, but I want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity for that feedback so we don't just have a small slice of the community giving feedback because it isn't just the people who show up every month, it has to be everybody in the community. Correct? Right, okay, very good.
So let me ask Tim a question.
Sure.
What, what's your goal or do you have a goal or timeline as to when you'd like to see this completed by?
Well, I don't know necessarily about a timeline. I think my, my goal is to develop a plan, you know, what can we do to move beyond, you know, just the, you know, the status quo of, you know, our statutory requirements, you know, for public hearings.
Okay.
You know, I don't think we have to get crazy, but I think we have to move beyond the status quo at, at a minimum.
We agree. I think we all agree that the current public participation process is lacking and frustrating.
I agree.
For everybody. So, let's, my suggestion is we start with a three-person committee from the planning commission to draft a framework document. Think of it as a house. A house need walls, it needs rafters, it needs a door, it needs a window, it needs a plumbing system, it needs an electrical system, it needs a kitchen and a foundation. That's all a house needs. Everything else can be decided upon at some point. The number of bedrooms, the wallpaper, the siding, the, the number of windows, the number of doors, the size of, I mean, all of these things. Though, let's get a framework of a document out. Let's get some draft goals stated that then can have input. Maybe there's eight goals, we only need four, I'm not sure what it is. But there's a number of documents here to work from and frankly, there's not an unlimited number of universe of goals out there
Right.
in a public participation document to pick from. So we're not talking like, this is not a sustainability plan where there is like a million different things to pick from. There is a limited universe of things to pick from. So let's get a framework to work from, let's bring it back and then we can have, I think, a work session with the public. We'll do something a little bit outside of this room where we can have some whiteboarding, dots. We can have some interactive tables, the, the whole facilitation method where we won't maybe call it a work session, we'll call, I'm not sure what those are called, but we'll have some kind of a session where people can kind of give their input on what they want to see. It will be public participation, but we'll get some input that way. But we can't start from ground zero with that. We need to have something to start from and we need a framework. So I think this body was appointed by city council to kind of be that first funnel. All right, so...
Madam Chair, um, before we inaugurate that process and start that process, I would like to share my impressions of the material that we were provided with. You know, it all was very similar. I, I, if the same consultant didn't write it, they were stealing from one another, that's true. But I also agree that that's not necessarily a bad thing. I, I think any plan that we come up with should be necessarily general and aspirational in, in, in nature. I was struck by a couple of points that seemed to recur in the various plans that I, that I looked at. The use of a variety of communication tools. And, and we have a wider variety than we've ever had in, in history before to, to draw from. The use of a variety of, of educational tools. And I think an aspirational plan should be very clear about what the goals are, but flexible enough to allow us to pick the tools that we're gonna use in, in a particular proceeding. The Lhasa La PUD is a, is a different animal than a, a six-foot wall around Matrix Motors. It just, just is. And, and we need to be cognizant of that. I think the last point I'd like to make, and I'm making these comments just, I want my viewpoint to kind of inform as we go forward or be at least considered. I think where we truly fall down, have felt fallen down in the past, is in two areas. One, getting the, the initial word out to people about a project, we have to be, think about better ways to do that. Also, I think we, we don't really systematically, um, consider the public input that we get. We need to be responsive to all the public input. And by responsive, I don't mean agree with it all. I mean, consider what we get and respond to it appropriately. Sometimes we get excellent suggestions and ideas from the public. Other times we get impractical and unfeasible suggestions. But either way, we need to, we need to avoid dismissing things out of hand or ignoring them. We need to, we need to be very systematic about collating the information that we get from the public and, and responding to it. And I don't think we've done that well in, in the past. I think it's been fairly ad hoc, the way we do it. So those are elements of these public participation plans that kind of jumped out at me and I just wanted to make those points.
Well, I, I, well, I actually want to respond to a couple of those things because I, actually, Mark, so I appreciate those points. As far as coalescing the points from the public, um, I, I have to disagree that the individuals here don't take the comments from the community seriously. I think, or, or take them and consider them. I think we do, and as far as discussing them, this is our forum to discuss them. We have no other forum in which to discuss them. To discuss them outside of this forum would be breaking a law, quite frankly.
Where, where did I suggest that?
No, 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 I'm not suggesting, but you're, but, but this, this is it. So the, the comments come to us, we consider them here, we openly discuss them, and this is it. This is the process. And I, if, if, if you don't like the process, I'm not sure what to do about that. But your, your, your comment that we, we don't take them in and we don't coalesce them...
We're not organized about considering and responding.
But how, how else are we supposed to be organized when we have nine people sitting up here in a public forum and this is our only forum in which to be?
Well, we might consider summarizing comments that we get at a public hearing or a work session, this is just an example. And, and then, um, you know, responding at a meeting to the points that have been summarized for us. That might be a more organized way to do it.
So we can delay a vote, we can do that. That would be our, that would be our option, is delaying a vote.
If you want public input, you're gonna, you're gonna have a slower process.
Yeah, that's, well, I mean, I think that's fine and we have done that. We have done that often, I think, delayed votes.
You're not gonna have huge public input on every single proposal that you get.
I think we have, we have a lot of community input on our, on our programs over the last couple of years. I mean, my first couple of years here, I practically fell asleep on everything because there was nobody out there. So I really do like having the community here. This is not a, I don't mean to cut you off right here, but this is not a public participation session right now.
This is a regular planning commission meeting?
Yes, and I have not called...
And this is an agenda item?
I have, but I haven't called for public comments yet, so...
Well, I'm just waiting here for an opportunity.
Okay.
I want to make sure the discussion isn't closed.
So I'm just saying that this should be considered as part of the planning process. We need to look at this, we need to see if we are, um, you know, understanding the body, the corpus of public input and, and if we're responding. And I don't, I don't mean bending, I don't mean agreeing, I just mean responding.
All right, go ahead, appreciate it.
I, I think that's one of the reasons to, to put this plan together, frankly. And, um, while maybe not popular amongst this body, I find it quite ironic that we're talking about a public participation plan and not including the community from the beginning. I think that, yes, it might make it uncomfortable for some, it might make it messy and it might take us longer.
We have to do it right.
I think we have to do it right and if we don't put this document together, together, I have an issue with that. I have an issue with that. I agree it will take longer, I agree, um, some might find it uncomfortable, but I think it's important.
Any other comments?
I've listened to everybody here and I've sat here for many years. I, um, and we've had subcommittees to do many things. Parking, we looked at parking privately, we looked at a couple other items too private that we looked at. Subcommittees and I've, in fact, I headed this subcommittee before I was chair for parking. I became a parking guru. The, um, I like the idea of you appointing a committee, subcommittee. And I like the idea that that subcommittee drafts something. I think you gotta have something before, if you start involving the public before you have anything, it's gonna be chaos. And I think that you need to have the subcommittee, a three-member subcommittee. Mr. Tanguy would be a good person to... would be a good person to sit on that subcommittee. Or Ms. Kapalinski, maybe both of you, I don't know. But that's my thing. I think you gotta start with something and bring it in and say, okay, let's start here. Thomas Jefferson drafted the Declaration of Independence with Ben Franklin. It wasn't done in a, by the whole group of congressional people. And I think, thinking in that manner, you, you'll get more accomplished and you'll get to a quicker end result by having a group start with something and bring it back. And you can sit here and then debate it till the nth degree with citizens' comments and everybody else. Because I'm sure that whatever you folks would come up with, this committee comes up with, there will be a lot of discussion from this side of the table, not only from that side of the table. Then the public can put, those are my words on it. And I'll wait for everybody to side watch.
Are there any more comments from the commission? All right, we'll take, public comments?
Okay, first of all, to address your comment about not being the time for public comments, you did not call for public comments on the last agenda item. So, I wanted to make sure that I didn't miss it this time, number one. I didn't feel I was out of order anticipating that by standing here. I want to thank Mr. Richardson, Ms. Shadle, Ms. Kempner, and Mr. Murret for saying that, indicating at least to me that the, the public participation is a serious issue that needs to be taken seriously from day one. My questions for you do not have to be answered, but I don't know how you can possibly set all of your goals without initial public participation. I think on some levels, Mr. Richardson is absolutely right. You, some of you have insulated yourselves from the gut feelings of the very residents that you're supposed to serve. So, I want to see that stop. I am volunteering right now, and I'm practically insisting that you let me come to these committee meetings because I have a lot of great ideas about public participation, and I plan to be there regardless. The, you know, if you're first hearing about something at a public hearing, like some of the, like Harvard Commons, then things have been done wrong. Those neighbors were totally sandbagged by this. And I saw some of that through some of the La Salle stuff. There's some element of secrecy, or we don't want the crowds to show up, or we'll give them cookies and lemonade and all that. And that kind of stuff has to stop, and you need to hear that from day one. So, your three committee members, count me in. I will be there along with friends who want our public partition, participation ideas to be heard. Individuals here need to be respected, I think. Mr. Richardson is absolutely right. I have been at the receiving end of your eye rolls when I have just simply stepped up here and not uttered a word. That has to stop. That's part of your public participation input. Ms. Shadle is right. Some of this stuff is going to hurt. But unless you are willing to hear it and admit it, or deny it, or address it in any fashion, none of this is ever going to change. The other thing, you gave, you know, you're, as the chairperson, Ms. Buckler, you're giving lip service to wanting this public participation, but yet at the same time, you want to expedite it. And you, it seems like you want, I want a subcommittee, but then I want to tell the subcommittee what they can and cannot do. And it really shouldn't be both ways. Pick a couple of people, take all of you. Let people invite the information and the people and the input that they think will be helpful. Why would you want to limit that? The other thing is, you guys are the planning commission. Why would you abdicate your selection of public participants to the city council and limit it to the CAC? You don't see any of those CAC people here at these meetings for the planning commission. Why would you want to go there? You have the power to select and invite public. You have a committee of three or four people. You have an open meeting. You have a workshop. Let every person on the committee specifically invite three people, or two people, or one person. Why would you not want to expose yourself to the most well-rounded information that's out there? I just don't understand the resistance that I'm getting. I'm getting a vibe from you that you just don't want to hear it. You want this done, 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 so you can move on to other things. And that's not how this is going to work. And none of these people here, I know I'm speaking some of the things that they're thinking. They're not going to stand for that. They'll be breaking down doors if you continue to be resistant to this. And it's not going to go well. Anyway, you have to start setting goals with the public. That's the only place to start with this because clearly, things have not been done well, or done right. Or you wouldn't have, you wouldn't feel like you had to roll your eyes because I wouldn't have to be up here offering genuine criticisms, just for your consideration. Thank you.
She kind of, Kurt from Berkeley, I was gonna kind of say what she had kind of touched on. I didn't realize you were gonna touch on that. But you talked about community involvement. And, you know, during the previous agenda item, I kind of thought I might have wanted to say something, but then I never heard, you know, you asked for, you know, public input or community input. And maybe in the future, if we could kind of, if we knew that we were going to be asked every time, we could kind of wait. You know, so if we could kind of get a process that we knew that you were going to go around the table, and then, then you were going to always say, you know, is there any community input, then, you know, we could kind of always sit back and wait. Now, as far as the CAC, I think, Mr. Murret had touched on it. I had, I thought of the idea, you know, that why couldn't you use the same guidelines that they, how they chose the CAC and choose people that way, or, you know, however many people you guys decided. But even Vivian from the DDA, she did something great. I mean, she didn't say, how many people can I, do I have to involve, or how do I get people involved? She just said, I'm gonna have a work session about our, our, our goals and what we want to do for downtown. And she just had the event, and, and she set up tables. And as more people showed up, more people had tables, she had all the supplies. And she found, she just, she came up with a very creative way to get a lot of really good input for the downtown and, and the whole thing that she's, you know, she's having, what, next week, I think that is?
Mm-hmm.
And, and, you know, it, it just worked. I mean, it wasn't like, there wasn't a hassle of getting the involvement. She created the event, you know, she came up with tools on, for that specific thing. But it, it can, that can be carried over to other subjects. And I, and I just think that, you know, maybe if somebody wants to reach out to her, and how does she come up with the idea, or, or how does she focus on that, you know, that specific thing. But I, I think that can be used. I mean, it's, it's been done. So, it's not like you can't say, well, if we get a bunch of people, we can't, you know, come to a direction. She did it. I mean, that, that came out of nowhere. And I think it worked really well. You had people that were from the planning commission, you had people just from the public, you had people from businesses. Everybody came together, and they were stationed with different people. And everybody worked together, and it worked really well, I think. Thank you.
You're giving that look right now.
I'm not giving that look right now. I'm addressing Mr. McLean. If you'd like to speak, come up to the.
Well, I want to agree with Kurt because I was at that workshop myself. And it did, it worked very well. And anybody and everybody was welcome. And why isn't anybody and everybody welcome at the planning commission?
Everyone is welcome at the planning commission, Ms. Morris.
We don't feel welcome. We really don't feel welcome. We feel like we must assert our will upon you. And it's, it, it hasn't been working really well. So, please be open to, to new ideas. And I think that you're hearing some new ideas, and I still feel resistance from you. I, I feel it. So, maybe, whatever. Just be open to suggestions, please. Thank you.
So, Mr. McLean, since this was your idea to have a public participation document, and you brought it to us, and a subcommittee is not going to work, we are going to have to have some kind of public participation process for the public participation document.
Well, I, from what I gather, I think we can have a subcommittee that, you know, holds an open house with, with members of the public. So, I think that's, I think our next step would be to have some volunteers for our subcommittee.
So, we need some, we need some kind of resources to run all of that, that will not be a committee of three, that will be enough to run all of that. So, to run the DDA process takes a tremendous amount of resources and whatever consultants that they had to do that. And to run the previous workshops or public input, I mean, those don't come off without, with a three-person committee. They take a lot of back office resources, and they take time, and they take space. And then, they take somebody to consolidate all of that information. So, and I don't know, you know, everybody starts this process from a different place in their experience level. So, I don't know what everybody's place is on, on their, where they've, where they've been in any kind of public process. But these kind of document preparations, I mean, I've started at, at whiteboard, and I've started in the middle, and I've started near the end and refined them. And they are a tremendous amount of work. So, my idea of having a three-person committee was not to erase anybody's input. It was because we know the basic framework that the document needs to meet, because this framework, I think, has to be accepted by some kind of a body to make us redevelopment-ready, correct?
Yes.
All right. So, because of that, there's a standard it has to meet, that it gives us a little bit of a leap. We're not starting at a whiteboard. We have a framework for it. That it makes it, it just kind of expedites it so we don't spend a great deal of time when we could be, if, if we have other things on our agenda. And everybody's time is valuable, and it's hard to get people's time into these subcommittees because people have, you know, full-paying jobs and, and time and families and whatnot. So, and we have a lot of other things here in the city. So, that was my goal. It wasn't to squelch any type of input. There will be time for that input. It was to expedite the kind of routine mundane parts of the process. But if we want to start from a more whiteboard place, we can do that. So, but that's going to take the resources more than a three-person resource to make that happen. So, I don't know, I don't know how we, I think that has to be public noticed. It has to be full committee. It has to be, we have to have a process to gather all of that and then digest all of that. And then, and then maybe we can spin it off to a three-person committee to then pull all that into kind of a draft document. And, and then maybe, and then we'll bring it back into the, the full commission. I'm kind of thinking out loud a little bit, but that makes it. So, does that satisfy you, Ms. Shadle?
Yeah, I think, I think because there is a framework, I think previously, some folks were saying, we don't have a framework. We have to create. I think there, there is already a framework, which I think then does allow that public participation to be more effective because we already know what pieces have to be there. The question is, what, what are the details of each of those pieces, right? So, I think we do have the framework, right? And frankly, talking about the goals, which I thought was kind of what we were gonna start talking about tonight, is the first part of that framework. So.
Well, I think the goals are important, but if we're gonna do this, then it can't just be the seven community members in the audience.
Agreed.
Because they are not the spokesman for 16,000 people. So, we need, we need to have everybody noticed on that. Go ahead.
If I could just comment quickly. So, my concern about just having a setting like this, where we're talking about goals and just having open public involvement, is how do we all stay on task? How do we keep it organized? How do we take all of those comments and synthesize them into something usable? I'm concerned about just having an open discussion like this.
Sure.
Because I, I don't think that it's the most useful way to spend our time to, to collect the information on those goals.
We're not going to. We're going to do it in a, like a public meeting, not a public meeting. We're gonna do it.
Even if it's a.
I, I get it, Ms. Kapalinski, but.
Even if it's a work session, I, I just, I think it has to be somewhat organized, and there has to be a way to collect comments. Yes, there will be. There will be. It will be very similar to our, like, what was the last one we had? It was on the.
Right after that.
I didn't decide it wouldn't, she didn't decide it wouldn't work. There, there's a process to make sure that everybody's voice gets heard, and everybody's voice gets recorded, and that we do it in an organized fashion so it's not chaos. These are, they're fairly complicated to get everybody's input so that we can hear it. And, and I, I agree. I mean, so, having been on the backside of that and worked those back things, they are, they are kind of complicated. But I, I do, there is a methodology that will work. And so, I'll work with Mr. McLean on setting something up.
Well, may I suggest?
Sure.
One way of organizing this would be, we have these plans that we reviewed. They have commonalities. And if we could prepare a, like a, almost like a, a survey to distribute at the meeting for people to fill out, or, you know, and they wouldn't have to turn in right away. They could use it to frame their own comments. And then, that way, we could keep people, we could keep the comments directed toward the issues that, that, that we need answers for. And we could also maybe, I don't know, put that on the city's website.
We would have like voting stations, and we would have, you know, what is the, like, ways of communication? Because we've heard that in the past of, people don't have internet, people don't read the newspaper.
You want to have an envisioning session is what you want.
Yeah, so, I think we can do something that is similar to what they're having on the seventh for the, for the Downtown Development Authority. But if that is the, I mean, I think that is the way that we can have the public's involvement, the community's involvement. Because I don't know where to start.
Clearly, it has to have.
Personally, on what community members to include in this process. I wouldn't know where to end.
Well, it doesn't end. That's part of the beauty of it, in my opinion. But, no, clearly, it has to have some sort of structure to it. I mean, it's not, I'm not suggesting that we start with a, you know, clean slate. We, we know what the framework needs to be. We know what the pieces need to be. The question is, what color, what size, would, you know?
So, I task Ms. Shadle to work with Mr. McLean and I.
Absolutely.
On coming up with a framework for a public input session for this.
Happy to do so.
And I think what we don't want to do is have paralysis by analysis.
Absolutely.
That's, that's kind of the feeling that I'm getting.
I think that's what we're doing right now.
Oh, absolutely. Okay, so.
I still, I just need to make a comment. I still think, I think we're complicating this now. I still think a committee of a few of us commissioners up here and a couple residents is the way to go.
And then, you take that to a visioning session with the public, get their input, and then come back. And then, maybe, you know, because that's.
What two residents, Tim?
Whoever volunteers. If we get, if we get six, eight volunteers, we ask them about their background, their, you know, I mean.
We have to develop a process for all of that. I mean, sir, Tim, it, it becomes, it becomes untenable. Like, I, I am, I don't know that we are a body equipped to handle a bunch of new processes to identify that. That's not what we were tasked with. I don't know that we've ever been faced with this. Have you?
I mean, I think there's a fairly clear framework here. It's really about tweaking, like, what actually fits in this, right? Some things would be awesome, like the, the charrettes. Those would be awesome to have. We can't afford to have those. So, I mean, we kind of know that's off the table, right? So, we kind of look and go, what's, what's feasible? There's not 8,000 choices. So, I mean, I don't think this is a completely huge and surmountable task.
I didn't think so either, but that wasn't the comments that we got. So, let's start with a, as far as the public input process, on what the public wants to see as far as how their input gets considered. how their input gets considered, because that seems to be the comments that I heard tonight. All right. We, you, Ms. Morris, you had your comments. Is there more comment? Are there more comments?
I have more comments, if I may.
On, go ahead.
Well, I'm a little more agreeing with Mr. Murad. Maybe, maybe if you have a private discussion with Vivian Carmody, you could see how she did it. She wasn't really, she didn't lead that, that workshop. They had a consultant, obviously. I don't think it takes a massive amount of people. I think that three people could probably manage it just fine. I don't think that you need to get applications and qualifications and resumes from residents to be able to participate in a committee like that. That's not really representative of the community. So, I mean, I thought it worked out really great. Kurt can speak on it, too. A workshop where anybody who's interested can come, participate. It doesn't have to be all that rigid. You just want to get ideas from different people. It sounds to me like you're trying to exclude people's...
Morris, I'm trying to include more people.
But it doesn't sound that way from my viewpoint. It sounds like you want to limit it more. And how do we limit it? It's too complicated. We can't have, we, okay, we're now we're going to have to have everybody do it, because it takes too many people to do it. And who do we invite from the public? Who do we allow in?
No.
It sounds like it's exclusionary. And I'm just suggesting that it's not that complicated.
Ms. Morris, you misunderstood, and you're misinterpreting, and you're twisting my words. My point is, that if we have a committee of three, that's easy. We can appoint three people from the planning commission. If we have a committee that includes people outside of this committee, I am not equipped to appoint anybody outside of this committee in whatever process to include them. I don't know that I've been tasked with that by the people who have appointed us, number one. Number two, I think if we're going to have a process then, that includes the community, it shouldn't just be two voices. It should be all the voices.
We agree on that.
So then we have an input session that includes all the voices.
I agree with that.
Okay. So we will have an event that includes all the voices.
Okay. And my suggestion was that not to worry so much about appointing the public.
I'm not appointing anybody for that.
You mentioned that, and you're...
No, no, no. You misunderstood.
Point number one that you just mentioned to me, was, use the word appoint. You didn't know how to appoint, who to appoint. You didn't think that you had the...
I'm sorry, I misspoke. That wasn't what I meant.
Okay.
For, for a public input session like that, it is the entire commission.
Well, I disagree. I think a committee would work fine.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I may, I make, might make this suggestion. We have the committee, you know, put some ideas together, then the committee can, you know, have a, you know, an open house where they say, this is what we're thinking, you know. What do you think? Is this going to work? You know, what's, what's not here that you would like to see? I think something like that would maybe be a good way to get started.
Madam Chair, I think it's simple. I don't know. And I don't want to, I think it's simple. I think that's, that's exactly it. And it starts with, what is a public participation plan? And why are we even interested in doing it to begin with? Here are the pieces of the plan. And here are the goals that have been assimilated from the information that we currently have. What do you think about them? Do you have additional ideas?
Sure.
It, that doesn't seem like a endless slope.
You don't need a committee to set that.
To me.
That would be the public input process.
Exactly. I don't think it's an endless, you know, questioning or discussion. I think it's pretty straightforward.
And then from that, I'm not sure we can talk about how to draft the framework document, or maybe Mr. McLean drafts the framework document, brings it back.
I can do that.
All right. Okay.
Okay.
There's one more comment.
I'm curious. I keep hearing things about, we don't have money for that, or like, the charrette sounds like an awesome idea. Like, why don't we have money for that? And how do we get money for that? Like, can we get community sponsorship? Can businesses come and help pay for some of these things, or volunteer basis? Like, I don't think money should be a roadblock.
Well, I think when Ms. Kempner brought up charrettes, charrettes are when there's a project on the, in the planning process.
Right.
Like a design charrette. So that's an actual process that if you're contemplating, and I think Ms. Kapalansky or Mr. Tengary can probably explain it, or an architect can explain it better than I can.
Yeah.
So something like what the DDA, and I didn't go to the design guidelines process, but I did hear all about it. That's kind of like what a charrette would be, and that is quite expensive to run, get all the background materials together for, get all the boards together. You have to design exhibits. So something like that, you would hire a consultant for, and you would need a budget for. And we just don't have the budget for things like that.
So how do we get, how do we get a budget? Who do we talk to?
Well, for...
I just don't think it...
For this process, for the public participation document, we don't need a designed charrette for that person.
No.
Because there's a framework for that.
I think, I guess I'm envisioning something maybe more low-level, like, maybe it's just about people putting post-its up on a wall. What is, what's community?
Well, that's what we're, that's what we're envisioning for this.
What's redevelopment? Like, those are really basic questions. Until you know those, you can't make framework. Like, and that's all, I think, that everybody is talking about, is trying to put a little bit of fun back in. This is getting really rigid.
No.
And make it so that some voices are heard, before we go set up all the rules and the flow chart.
So did we, did you have a chance to review any of the draft documents that were posted as part of our package tonight?
Just briefly.
Okay. So the redevelopment-ready communities process requires that we have a public participation document be approved. So that document has to meet a certain standard. So we're trying to create, that's, that document. So it does need to meet the standard. It has to have certain elements in it. So we're talking about what those elements would be. So right now, that kind of cuts a little bit of our work in half, because it gives us the table of contents and the things it must include. Now, what color the walls are, how many windows, size of the windows, what the drapes look like, what size toilet you have, what kind of sink you have. Those are the things we get to decide on in this house. But, and what that input looks like, that's what we're talking about. So I agree that from a larger project, if we were to have another, you know, PUD or something like that on the table, you're exactly right, those input sessions. But for this, we are looking at something simpler, where we have, you know, tables and things on the wall, and things where to have input. But it does take time to make sure we have facilitators at every table, that we make sure that we gather all that information that gets, and we gather it correctly and accurately. So, and that we have a session that's available to people.
Okay, Michelle.
So.
I guess I just see that you, there could be student involvement. I mean, we have resources. Let's find a way to use them. Let's not, like, just say, oh, we don't have the money for it. I, I don't want us to, like, come to conclusions before we've even just had a chance to start.
Any other comments? All right. So with that, move on. Do we have any liaison reports?
I was unable to attend the chamber meeting. The...
Lashes. Forty lashes.
Yep. The environmental committee did meet. However, I was unable to attend that.
Forty lashes to you.
Yeah, I didn't make it to the DDA.
I did go to the special meeting of city council last night, and I did hear the statements by the six candidates for the city council seat. All of them seemed very qualified. There seems to be a pretty good slate. I think it was, what, 12 applicants, right, Mr. Ross? And then down to eight, there was eight, there was nine, and then they, now to six. Okay, sorry. Nine, and now there are six. And they each gave a very nice statement. And then the meeting was over in 43 minutes. Kudos to them. So that was that. Any other comments tonight? We'll go around the table. Ms. Kempner?
Um, nothing for me.
Mr. Tengary?
I'll be at the March meeting. I am going to announce far in advance that I will not be at the April meeting, as I will have a work commitment on, for the April meeting.
Forty lashes. Forty lashes.
I'm all set.
I had the opportunity to go with Tim and Vivian to the best practices training session on February the 6th out in Pontiac. And it was very interesting and enlightening about discussions on master planning, zoning ordinances. And we actually did a group session with the zoning ordinance, where we broke down in groups. And I sit there with Berkeley, and no, you're not going to use Berkeley. We picked somebody else. We had Wixoms to look at. And to participate in trying to analyze that document, we ended up finding out a page of it was missing, and a page that we needed. But it was very enlightening, and I have, I've picked up a whole lot of new ideas about master planning, zoning ordinances, and the whole group. We talked about zoning ordinances into chapters, and the more chapters you have, you're better off you are, because it defines specifics, and it gets very interesting. So I'm looking forward to Parts Four, Five, and Six, which are in April, I believe, the 10th. I believe it's April the 10th. So I'll be back at that session. So I'll have more to report on all that. And at that time, they're going to give us summaries of all of the lectures and stuff that we had heard. So, nothing?
Nothing. Nothing.
Nothing further.
All righty. All right. We adjourn. 9:32.